Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Role.
Alderman Chilvin.
Here.
Alderman Jean Francois. Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Ray.
Here.
Alderman Kleiner.
Here.
Alderman Green. Alderman Witt.
Here.
Alderman Massey.
Here.
Council President Rodriguez.
Here.
Coramis President.
Google minutes.
No minutes this evening.
No minutes?
No minutes.
Okay, alright. Correspondence.
We have one letter this evening from White Men, Ostrom and Hannah Attorneys at Law involving the redevelopment of lands on U.S. Route 6 by the OCW Development Company LLC for a warehouse, storage and distributed facility. Dear involved and interested agencies as required by 6 NYCRR 617.12, and at the request of the Town of Wayway Yanda Planning Board, please find enclosed the board's secret negative declaration with respect to the above referenced proposed action in the Town of Wayway Yanda, Orange County, New York. The Planning Board acting as the established secret lead agency for review of the project approved the enclosed secret negative declaration at its regular meeting on November 8th. Any questions regarding the enclosed should be directed to the Town of Wayway Yanda Planning Board. We'll also post it on our website.
Okay, we've received the file. Okay, for the goodness of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward.
Good evening, everyone. Vanessa from For the Money in Southern London Avenue. I'm here today because I'm still pushing for ETPA, but also to let you all know the progress that's been happening with ETPA around the Hudson Valley, is that in the City of Newburgh, they have officially wrapped up their vacancy study, and it looks like they're pushing forward to enact ETPA and form a rental guidelines board. So I hope that that's something that we can hopefully move forward with in the coming year. And I have sent out emails and followed up, and I realized that because you all got a new website and a new email address, a lot of the emails have bounced. So I just wanted to flag that in case anybody else has been emailing you all. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council? Okay, remarks to the mayor.
Good evening. Leonora is going to take over from here just to go through the budget for that you'll be voting on this evening. And the first few slides here will be Leonora making a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. In front of you, you have, this is the budget presentation going over the appropriations for 2024. In front of you, you have the 2023 operations in total of 7.144 million versus for 2024, we're proposing 7.381. Special items, that is our insurance and other specialty items, for 2023, it was 1.4, 1.4, 1,000, 1,004, oh my gosh, excuse me, sorry. 1,450,000, 1,450,000. For 2024, we're proposing 1,459. Personnel services was 19,021,000. For 2024, we're proposing 1,649. Employment benefits, we're looking at 14,658,000. For 2024, we're proposing 16,018,000. Our debt service for 2023 was 3,245. For 2024, we're proposing debt service of 3,470,000. So total in comparison to 2024, we're looking at a variance of 4%. Our total full-time employees as of right now is 213,000. This slide is just a snapshot of the percentage of impact that our employees' benefits has on our budget. You have the 2023 totals versus the 2024. For pension in 2023 was 3,487,000. In 2024, we're looking at 3,778,000. Our workman's comp was 1,100,000. For 2023, 2024, we're looking at 1,178,000. Health insurance, where we was about, for 2023 was 8,360,000. For 2024, we're looking at 9,232,000. And then payroll taxes and other benefits for 2023 was 1,809. For 2024, it's, we're looking at 1,831,000. So total difference, we're looking at about a 33%, 33, 34% impact to budget for 2024. Sorry, I'm going the wrong way. This is a snapshot of our major revenue sources. We have the tax cap for 2023 was at 92.55 per 100, per 1,000. For 2024, it's going to be about an increase to 95.42. That's a $2.87 change versus 2023. The variance is about 3%. Estimated average household based on those rates for 2023, it was 2,776. 2024, it's estimating 2,863. A change of $86. That's about a 3% change. And for our water and sewer rates, we're looking at a 2% increase. So for 2023, it was 17.51. For 2024, we're proposing a rate of 17.86. That's a 35 cents change, which is a 2% increase. Here is a screenshot, a snapshot of our property tax cap for 2024 versus 2023. So the tax levy for 2023 was 22,310,967 dollars. For 2024, our tax cap is 23,140,116. The variance, the difference is about a 3.72. So for overall, we are within the tax cap, budget neutral, meaning that we are not accessing any fund balance in order, we were able to balance out the budget with our revenues equalling our expenses, which is great news, giving the economy. And that's it for me. Does anybody have any questions?
Alderman Massey? It's not a question, it's a comment. I can tell you, on day one, when we first met, it was nothing like this. We owe Leonora a big debt of gratitude. She and the mayor, they called in every department head, and I think every one of them couldn't believe what they had to do. And then she would get, call them again and tell them, this is the way it's got to be. I mean, this was not an easy process. I had absolutely nothing to do with it. I got to listen in on some of it. But, well, it's the truth. And she just did a great, great job, and we owe her a debt of gratitude. And thank you, I appreciate it.
No, thank you. And definitely the department heads and the mayor, and it was definitely a team effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonora. And hopefully we'll adopt the budget this evening. If you have any questions, further questions, we certainly can address it under the resolutions for you. Getting into the budget, and one item that did not make the budget this year, which I, if you recall my state of the city back in earlier this year, I talked about the need to address the ambulance service throughout New York State, and how the New York Conference of Mayors has now made it a priority because the disarray of both the volunteer ambulance corps throughout New York State and the paid ambulance service. And if you recall, last year, Mobile Life notified us that they would be billing us, I believe it was $600,000 or $700,000, going from zero to $700,000 for basic service, meaning that the ambulances that are here would be prioritized for Middletown. Doesn't include any billing for, to the customers. This is just a basic service cost going from zero to almost $700,000. We were able to negotiate with Mobile Life last year and maintain it at zero, knowing that at some point in the future, that we were hoping that the state would start addressing the mobile, or the ambulance crisis throughout the state. Didn't happen. I know there are some discussions up in Albany, mostly dealing with volunteer ambulance corps and some support for them. But similar to the fire service and the volunteer corps, their volunteerism is down. So even a lot of volunteer corps now are paying people to staff at least half of the day, and, or contracting with other agencies. Mobile Life, unfortunately, or I guess maybe fortunately too, I don't know, was bought out by a company called Empress. Empress has notified us, and I've explained this to the council and executive session, in October, right during the middle of our budget process, that their estimated billing, that they needed to go to contract with the city, our contract was expiring, or had expired, and that the billing to the city of Middletown would be $680,000 in that area. Again, from zero to $680,000. And that basically is a all or nothing proposal. Either contract with us, or we can no longer provide basic ambulance service to the city of Middletown. You would be into a mutual aid system if you provide, and there's a whole bunch of things with that too, where you have a community like, say Monroe, has a volunteer ambulance corps, they're allowed to be in the mutual aid system because they provide some type of service. We as a city don't. So what a lot of cities are doing is they're shifting and speaking with their paid fire departments to start providing ambulance service. Like New York City, you know, the EMT service is part of, basically part of the fire department also. So we had a decision as we were moving forward, and we met with Empress, we were able to make, negotiate with them some service requirements, rather than the ambulances being here, part of a mutual aid system going, or transports, or hospital transports, or nursing home transports, that we would get two dedicated ambulances to the city, and they would not be utilized as part of mutual aid for communities that do not have ambulance service. And I know Empress is talking to some of these other communities. For example, Wayway Yanda does not have a paid or a volunteer service. And if, so these ambulances would not go into Wayway Yanda unless they entered the mutual aid system. They would be dispatched, and I don't know how they would be dispatched, but I know Empress is also talking to them. But there are a few communities in the county that are not part of this whole system. So it's very complicated. We worked out a one year contract, and we are using the ARPA funds, which is part of the COVID monies, post-COVID monies, under President Biden, to pay for these, this year for 2024. This will be a budget item next year. Empress is looking for a three-year commitment. We've discussed with them the formula, we've discussed with them working to possibly talk to some of our services here, whether it's in the, primarily in the fire department, to start providing basic life support. There's two life supports in the ambulance service. One is ALS, which is advanced life support, and the other is BLS, which is basic life support. Our fire department does that now on a third call basis. So if you're responding to, if mutual aid, for example, if the ambulances were not available, the timeout was, say, 20 minutes. The Middletown Fire Department could be dispatched on a, on an emergency call and have been dispatched under those scenarios. Most of our, all of the firefighters are trained with basic life support. Some of them are EMTs, but not all. So we're going to be discussing with them also the possibilities of absorbing some of this service, because we need to have a certain level of protection within the city. So just so you're aware, that the budget that Leonora just presented did not contain any funding for ambulance service as being provided under the ARPA funds for 2024. 2025 forward will be within our budget, and it will be very difficult probably next year to stay within that tax cap. We'll have to do some, look at other ways of cross-cutting possibly, but, but it's, it's basically a shift from state and county levels down to the local level to provide these different services. To me, it makes no sense for each individual community, because people crossover have to provide this type of service. It makes more of a sense to have a regional, county approach to it, but that's not happening. So we're, you know, we're going to be in flux for the next year, seeing how we can supplement the Mobile Life services and also reduce our costs with them, possibly to offset some of the, some of the local costs that we may be absorbing through our fire department for call frequency and possibly increase staffing there. So that's, that's that. It's a serious situation. We're taking this seriously, and we're hoping that things might pop on the state level, because every community in New York is crying about it. And as I said, the Conference of Mayors now has prioritized as one of its top three topics in emergency services. We also had a lot of good news over the weekend, and many people attended Friday the opening of the new Middletown ribbon cutting, the former Tompkins Building on North Street. It's absolutely beautiful. It was a huge investment by the proprietors of the, of the business, and a great time was had by all. I want to thank everyone who was able to attend, and also thank many of the people on social media that appreciated the investment there. It's a, a department store that specialize, has specialty items, and is very impressive, and hopefully they'll be here for many, many years to come. So congratulations to the owners of the new, the new Middletown store here at North Street. We also had a second ribbon cutting on Saturday morning, which was the crossback, take-back ribbon cutting on Railroad Avenue. Mr. Massey and I met at 5:30 that morning. We did the CrossFit program, and then we were able to come back at 9:30 for the, for the ribbon cutting. Correct, Mr. Massey?
Absolutely. I've never known you to tell a lie.
That's correct. That's correct. Our next is the Middletown, Middletown Hillside Cemetery Board Honors the Revolutionary War Soldiers. Alderman Kleiner was able to make it also. And I want to thank Andy Mills, the American Legion, and all the people at Hillside for all the organization. I think, I think, Mr., I believe maybe the Historical Society had something to do with that. I know they did have some work at Tompkins too, and Peter Leskara spoke at the Tompkins Building. But this was really a special event, well-attended on Sunday at the, at Hillside. And, and you know, Hillside is such a treasure for this community. Jerry, I'm sure, will probably talk a little bit about it. He's much more up to speed on, on what's going on there. But it was a wonderful event, and Andy Mills and his staff, or not his staff, his volunteers and the American Legion deserve a lot of credit, and we want to thank them for that. Also, this Saturday, or, no, we're going to be declaring, along with hopefully every community in the, across the nation, a Small Business Saturday. And we have a resolution that will be presented tonight to the board, and we'd like to read the resolution rather than just a summary of it. So I'll do that at this time. It's, "Whereas the government of the City of Middletown, New York celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are 33.2 million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62.7% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.4% of the employees in the private sector of the United States. Whereas 68 cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in that local community. And every dollar spent at a small business creates an additional 48 cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And 72% of consumers reported that Small Business Saturday 2022 made them want to shop and dine at small, independently owned retailers and restaurants all year long. And the City of Middletown, here, whereas the City of Middletown, New York supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed this Saturday, after Thanksgiving, as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, be resolved that I, Joseph DeStefano, Mayor of the City of Middletown, together with Common Council President J. Miguel Rodriguez, and the entire Common Council do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2023 as Small Business Saturday, and urge residents in our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday, and to shop small throughout the year." So we're asking for that resolution to be passed this year, or this, this evening, I mean, not this year. And hopefully it'll be unanimous support. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be willing to address them.
Any question for the mayor?
You do?
I was just questioning, because I don't see it on the printed agenda. Is that coming from the floor later in the meeting?
It was a proclamation, it does not require council.
Oh, well, we don't, we don't need to vote on it then? Just a proclamation? Okay. Well, we'll do that. And you're going to present it to who? We're going to send it to the people that you mail.
Small business.
Small business, okay, great. Well, that's that. So I stand corrected.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay. Remarks of the department heads, economic development?
Good evening, everyone. Today, we had a couple of meetings. We had the IDA, Industrial Development Agency, meeting this afternoon, and then also our Community Development Agency met this evening with the CDA. Another home that was vacant, that the city took and the CDA restored, rehabbed. We have a new homeowner as of a couple weeks. So we're very excited about that. We're moving on to our next home that we should have a home buyer soon for as well. Also, I just want to say Friday is the big Santa's coming to town. So we start off Friday afternoon at Paramount Theater with a free showing, It's a Wonderful Life at 2 o'clock. And then Friday evening, we have the tree lighting ceremony and parade. We have 47 participants for the parade this year. And everything begins at 6:00. Parade steps off at 6:30. So come downtown and enjoy the festivities. We're looking forward to that. And also, like the mayor mentioned, for, in Saturday, Small Business Saturday, support and shop local. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Any question for Maria? Thank you, Maria. Okay, DPW Commissioner?
Good evening, all. Water level at the reservoirs, Alderman Massey, 99% full. We're happy to report that we have water-taking permit from the DEC that required installation of several new meters that we never had at all our reservoirs, bypassing the reservoirs, how much we're feeding from one, one reservoir to another. And that's all been completed, and we met that requirement for our water-taking permit as of last, last week. That was the last meter to be installed. Waiting, we were waiting for the Kench Dam to be completed. Last Wednesday, the Orange County Department of Health, they came to do their annual inspection of the water treatment plant and the water system, and it all went very well. We had to recommission the dissolved air flotation package water treatment plant, because we are gearing up hopefully for providing more water. And that was one of the things that were raised, is to put back the packaged plant. So I did spend quite a bit of time in there to recommission that plant, because not many people were familiar with it. So it's now, it's functioning. All we have to do, just change some, do some modification for the SCADA, for the programming, so that it will combine, it will combine the two of them together, the newer plant and the dissolved air flotation plant together, to function as one system as they were designed. And traffic operations, as you can see, I can't, you know, stress enough how beneficial this traffic operations, curbs and sidewalks, ADA accessibility, traffic lights, pedestrian crossing, how, how much of a tremendous, tremendous improvement it has done to our city, and we are continuing. So we're done with the construction work pretty much right now because of the weather. All the concrete work is done. The electrical work is going to continue. You'll start seeing some pedestrian poles being installed at different intersections. And then eventually, the traffic light poles amassed themselves, they will be installed. They are in stock. Right now, we have enough to cover, I believe, about 10 intersections. We just got the contractor got the delivery about a couple of weeks ago. So that will continue throughout the winter, weather permitting. So you'll still see some activities. Leaves pickup, we finished the, we started with the first ward that was completed. We're doing the second ward now. We have one more day. Hopefully by tomorrow, the second ward will be completed. We're picking up the leaves. After that, we'll go to the third ward, and then the fourth ward. So reminder for everybody, please do not, do not push the piles of leaves too far into the street. If you have to put them partially on your property, do so. You know, be mindful of the traffic and the school buses and the kids playing in the street, and the line of sight for anybody who's turning, stay away from the intersections, the usual that we keep talking about. And, and the code is very specific. Don't put it beyond four feet from your, from the curb. Today, obviously, we had the very, you know, some precipitation event. Some of it was snow, so our trucks went out in order to do, put some salting in there, very small amount of salt, in order to establish some base, because we have not had any, obviously, any snow since, you know, for a few months now. And this is the beginning of it. So we wanted to establish some base on the ground to help us out in the next storm. So that was done, and I thank DPW guys. They were there, and they jumped on it, and they finished like an hour ago. Before you, going to be a council resolution, Magnolia Park, which used to be called Miami'sburg, which is the development of East Main Street and Anthony, Anthony Street, that's in the City of Middletown. As I reported to you before, we had major, major dispute with the, with the developer, although we were working together until we asked for something that could not be done. So we had a big issue. Hire attorneys and everything like that. Now it's all settled. He's going to be constructing crosswalks across East Main Street from Magnolia Park Street, and that will have a flashing beacon. He did order the flashing beacon in there. It's going to look like Highland Avenue crosswalks in there with the, with the flashing beacon. That's been very successful. Highland Avenue on Sunrise, it's going to be an exact copy of it, solar powered. And, and that's where we are. So we did reach finally an agreement, the mayor, Alex and I, and now we're moving forward with it. And before you is a resolution to approve the road dedication, so that we can take over Magnolia Park or Magnolia Lane and Hillside, Cedar, Cedar Hill, I believe. That's in the resolution, short street, short stop that goes up to Anthony. And that was only phase one. After that, we'll go to phase two of the, of the project for accepting the roads. When we say accepting the roads, that means the city will take them over, will start, the police will start enforcing parking restrictions in there. The, there's going to be some stop signs, some yield signs, some, we'll start sweeping the streets in there. We will start picking up garbage and giving them the municipal solid waste containers and the recycling containers. And, you know, eventually, we'll be paving them and so on. And we will be snow plowing them as well and maintaining the street, that the section of the street has been dedicated. None of this will happen, not tomorrow, until we get conditions in the resolutions. That's before you met, which is going to be met, I believe, in thirty days. Highland Avenue Tank, that project is dragging on a little bit. We had some issue, as I reported to you before, with the insurance of the contractor. That has been resolved. The contractor has remobilized and went to the site today, and he's going to be providing heating equipment and dehumidifiers so that, to provide the optimum condition for paint, for painting the interior of the tank. We have specialty inspectors and we have engineers, and we were keeping a close eye on it to make sure that everything passes the test, and it's still, the painting is being completed under the most optimum conditions as required by the main paint manufacturer. So we have all these specialty inspectors there to make sure that we get the right job. With that, I will conclude. If you have any questions?
Alderman Massey?
Jacob, just because we have the holiday this week, would you remind people with the trash and with the recycling?
Yeah, everything, obviously, Thanksgiving Day, we will not have any, any pickup, so everything will be pushed back the one day. The recyclables as well.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you, Commissioner. Back also to the leaves. Once everything is completed, they're going to go back around again, right? Weather permitting?
Yes, yes, we will, we will go back around, but, you know, we want, you know, we would, we request from people to put everything out at once because, you know, we, it just, it's a lot of time to keep going. But yes, absolutely, we'll go back one more time. Yes, sir.
Anybody else? All right, Jacob, thank you. Please, Chief.
We're in the process of testing a piece of equipment. Some of you may have seen it or had inquiries in regards to it. It's a solar camera system that is stationary at Park Circle right now. It's a mobile system. Did some research on it, met with the vendors, and we're actually testing it for thirty days. We really like the abilities and capabilities of this piece of equipment. So after the thirty days, if it's something that we're interested in, I believe I have a grant to cover the funding for at least a year. This is something you see in some of the box store shopping centers. It's got some unique features that you could use some of the analytics to create travel zones or create voice commands, has strobe lights built into it that if someone enters into an area that they shouldn't be, sends out an audible message and some lighting. So we will have it out there for a little bit, working with the vendors on some of the functions and whatnot on it. But definitely, I think we could use it here in the city for a multitude of applications. So I will keep you apprised of our progress with it as we move forward. And if you have any questions or if you'd like to know more about it, by all means, let me know, and I'll do my best to answer those questions for you. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions for me, other than I'd like to wish each and every one of you and everybody in the community a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Any question for the police chief? Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
City Treasurer?
Good evening. I have nothing else for you this evening.
All right.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Any questions? Alderman Kleiner?
Yeah, I've asked this a couple of times. When it says the variance is three point seven two percent, and people understanding of the tax cap, that the tax cap's at two percent, is there something we're all missing?
The tax cap is not two percent. It's a calculation that is done by the state. So we present them with our tax cap that was prior. There are certain exclusions, certain inclusions. For example, we have a pilot program here, which is part of the results. So the tax cap is set overall at a two percent, but there's a calculation that's done that takes into consideration all these other factors, which sets the tax cap for the city. So before we even do the budget, I file the tax cap.
Okay. Thank you.
And a lot of the state mandates every year keep increasing, correct?
Correct.
And they just shove it down our throats.
Exactly.
Yeah. Waldman Johnson?
Two things. I'll concur with Mr. Massey and thank your team for the good work you did. The mayor did allude briefly to the idea of maybe going above the tax cap in the future with the emergency medical care. What are the ramifications if that were to occur?
We would have to have a public hearing, so we would have to have an unanimous vote as well. So we would have to prepare way more in advance if we are to exceed the tax cap next year.
Two-thirds.
Thank you.
All right. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, everyone. Brief tonight, before you, is the resolution for us to get the Civic Rec program. I spoke on it last meeting, but if anybody has any further questions about that. Our year is wrapping up. Also, our geese police is wrapping up. There's been a big influx at Davage recently, but we are ending in November, so hopefully the geese will be gone soon for the winter because our patrol is gone. Any questions?
I just have one thing. Ray Lynn, Nicole, Kelly, and Sharon did a phenomenal job. Radio City Show, the bus, the planning. I went, I didn't want to go, but was told to go, and it was, we were in New York City within an hour and something, you know, probably an hour and a half. The show was great, the timing, the planning, everything. They put, they put a basket together with cookies and water. We had a great time. I think that's going to probably for next time or even start looking at maybe doing it. I think you filled it in, what, ten minutes?
Yes, yeah. So next year, we're definitely looking into the possibility of two buses. We definitely think we could have filled the second one, being it filled in ten minutes, and we were just getting calls about if we were offering a second one, but we didn't want to run the risk, especially being the end of the year.
And the seats were great. They were right on the, on the level. It was great. Because I thought we were going to go up top, and they're like, no, your seats are down here.
Yeah. These are in orchestra floor level, so you couldn't beat the seats for the price that Kelly was able to get.
Yeah. Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. I mentioned earlier that I had some questions about the geese police and what their schedule is, since there are a lot of geese using Davage right now.
Yeah, end of November is their last patrol, but they are currently still doing it right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else? No, no, okay. All right, thank you. City Clerk?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Any question for the city clerk? All right. Public hearings and grievances?
We have a public hearing this evening. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, on or as near to seven-thirty PM as possible in the Common Council Chambers, sixteen James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed two-lot subdivision at eleven dash twenty-five Harding Street. Any and all persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed two-lot subdivision. The complete proposed application and map for the property for the subdivision are available in the office of the Common Council Clerk at City Hall, sixteen James Street, and on the city website. Any person unable to participate at the time of the public hearing may email comments in advance to rmcormick@middletownny.gov by order of the Common Council. Richard P. McCormick, City Clerk of the Common Council.
Okay, just fine. The public hearings now open. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the council? Kleiner?
Just quickly, this is the property that we voted to buy, I think, at the last meeting, and it is going to be used for the Heritage Trail, so it's going to benefit Middletown. Thank you.
Anyone else? I got a motion to close. Massey, second. Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing's now closed. Remarks of Alderman. Alderman Tobin.
Just briefly, just want to congratulate the Middletown football team, high school football team, for winning their section title. It made the whole school proud. Thank you.
Waldman Johnson?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify with the clerk. We had two resolutions in legislative. One of them appears on this agenda, one does not. Is there going to be a public hearing on the?
Yes, we anticipate a public hearing on the tobacco licensing legislation sometime in December.
Thank you. And I hope, I hope the community will join us for the Thanksgiving parade. I've commented to the mayor, it hearkens back to when life was simpler in the world, and I think in this current world, we could use a simpler life. So I hope many, as many people as possible will come out and join us, and it might even be above thirty degrees, you never know. So, thank you.
Alderman Witt, right?
Cold never stops us. I've got a bag of hand warmers and body warmers for me and the kids. We're going to make it. I don't really have anything this evening. I just want to thank DPW for always doing a great job with the leaves. I also want to thank our residents, because I think for the most part, people really stuck to keeping them very close to the curbs. It wasn't really out in the road like I've seen years prior, so my thank you to everyone who did that in the interest of everyone's safety. I look for, I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving. I look forward to the tree lighting. It's my favorite night in Middletown. It really is such a good time. And so a safe and happy holiday to everyone, and that's all I have tonight.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. It's a nasty night out tonight, and the warming station did open on Sunday. It was their first night, and they still will need volunteers. They have another, they have four training sessions scheduled if you think you're able to volunteer, either for an overnight or a two-hour shift. The training's Monday, November twenty-seventh, and these are all at seven PM at the Mulberry, at Mulberry Warming Station. Monday, November twenty-seventh, Tuesday, December twelfth, Monday, December eighteenth, and Monday, January eighth. So anyone who can help, and again, many thanks for the Turo students who are volunteering. I want to, on behalf of Andrew Green, who could not be here tonight, and myself, I want to thank the Second Ward residents for coming out to vote, and thank everyone who came out to vote. We see in the town of Walk Hill where they're virtually tied in the race for supervisor, and that's almost certainly going to go to a recount that's automatic if its difference is less than a half of a percent. So it'll be a while before we know who that one, who won that one, but it shows you how important it is to get out and vote.
They are tied.
What's that?
They are tied. Exactly tied, number?
The mayor says. So it's, it's just amazing, but they'll have to, I believe, have to certify all the absentee ballots by December second, and then they can go to a recount, and that'll be a hand recount. So the people do, the Board of Elections does a great job. The Hillside Ceremony was, was really very nice, and this is a family from out west that came with mirrors and such, and were able to figure out the names on some of those old gravestones that were moved from the original congregational church. And very hard to read, but they had a technique where, so they added five names and they put up a big stone monument for them. And that's, that's the Hillside Board of Directors, and it's Andy Mills and Dr. Fred Isick's behind it, and also with help from Ray Ayers, who's the, took over for Bob Benedict when Bob passed away this spring at Running Hillside Cemetery. So they do a great job. We will have a constituents' meeting. It'll be Monday, December eleventh, at seven PM, right here in the council chambers. This time, we plan to skip the January and February constituents' meetings. It's dark and cold, and, but if there's any major issue that comes up, we'll certainly have them anyway. A few times, we've mentioned that we've used ARPA funds to really rescue Middletown when we've needed the money, and I want to remind people that was the American Rescue Plan that was passed in the spring of two thousand twenty-one with President Biden's push to get that passed, and it, it rescued everyone to keep the country going from the pandemic. And it's really been certainly a huge help to Middletown and, I believe, in the rest of the country. Andrew, of course, you know, if you're going to miss a pre-Thanksgiving meeting, of course, you schedule your surgery for Monday afternoon. Well, Monday morning, it ends up being Monday afternoon, but, so I wish Andrew a speedy recovery, and I'm sure we will see him back at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. I, I am excited about the tree lighting and the parade. Forty-seven different people or forty-seven different groups. That, that sounds like a great night, and it is a night of memories. I know Facebook pops up things that happened years ago, and there was a photo that came up of probably fourteen years ago of my daughter on my shoulder eating a candy cane that Tom Bushy, the very talented former Times Record reporter, took. And I think she'll be at this thing with me this week, but I don't think we're going to be reenacting that photo.
Do it.
Yeah. No, 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 we'll make sure there's some medical care for me probably at that point. But I hope we see a lot of people. It is a great night for the city. I want to thank the council president, something I ran by him last month about a committee meeting that we're going to have on the fifth for the Recreation and Parks Department. We hear every meeting, Ray Lynn get up our superintendent and talk about all the great work that the rec department does, and I thought it would be a good idea for us to do sort of a review in light of certainly the budget time, just everything that the, her department and her team does for us as a city. So I have, thank you, Miguel, for the time. It's going to be scheduled for half an hour ahead of time. That way, if you're not interested in, in watching this, I don't want to tie up the meeting, but I, I think it'll be great to hear from her and meet her team and, and the recommission, so I hope we get some, some eyes to see that, and, and thank you. Thank you very much.
Alderman Massey?
Just a reminder that the firefighter exam, the deadline to submit applications is December fourth, has to be in the office by noon on December fourth. Number two, we have a resolution tonight to adopt the two thousand twenty-four budget, and I'm hoping after all the great work that Leonora did, that it will pass unanimously. Three, happy Thanksgiving, happy and healthy Thanksgiving to everyone. And the last thing, hope to see you all on Friday night at the parade and tree lighting, and thank you.
Okay, new business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey adopting the city of Middletown's two thousand twenty-four budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Bro?
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to accept a four thousand dollar grant from the county of Orange for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Stop DWI High Visibility Engagement Program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Bro?
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, accepting a donation of three hundred and forty-nine dollars from the Kiwanis Club of Middletown for the red oak tree planted at Thrall Park to celebrate the one-hundredth anniversary of the Kiwanis Club.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Bro?
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, authorizing an agreement with Civic Plus for the Civic Rec Portal for the Recreation and Parks Registration Program.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Bro?
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, accepting a seven thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollar grant from the county of Orange for the Stop DWI third enforcement period.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Ray. Any discussion? Bro?
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray? Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, authorizing a one hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollar and twelve cent budget transfer to cover the cost of city paving projects.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, authorizing an amendment and extension to the Golden Area Senior Transportation Agreement with the county of Orange.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Green? I'm sorry, Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, authorizing a renewal agreement with NEARMAP for the accessories office.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?
Aye.
Witt?
Aye.
Massey?
Aye.
President Rodriguez?
Aye.
Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, declaring a secret notice lead agency designation and determination of non-significance for a two lot subdivision at eleven dash twenty-five Harding Street.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Tobin?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Kleiner?[1608.88]